Notice to the public, individuals addressing the council should be respectful of others and their choice of words and actions owners of properties being considered this evening will be allowed to address the council at the time the condemnation hearing is called when the address is called. Please come to the podium and state your name and address. All cell phones and electronic devices used for communication should be silenced for the duration of the meeting. Thank you. I'd like to call this condemnation meeting to order. We'll have an invocation by Mr. Amade and a pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and Lord, we ask for your wisdom and guidance as we conduct the affairs of the condemnation hearings, Lord. Let our hearts be full of grace and mercy where it needs to be, Lord, and let us be able to make the decisions that we have to make. And Father, as always, I ask that you bless the people of Terrible Parish and present yourself in a manner of favor. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
May I get a roll call, Ms. Alicia?
Mr. Champagne, Mr. Hamner, Mr. Babin, Ms. Chauvin, Mr. Troscler, Mr. Pleasure, Mr. Harding, Mr. Royzen, Mr. Amady, Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum present. Madam Chair.
Okay. So from Chairman Harding, please be advised that I will be unable to attend tonight's condemnation hearings due to a previously scheduled event. I have reviewed the agenda and made my concerns known. I apologize for any inconvenience my absence may cause. Thank you. From Councilman Troscler, please accept my apologies for not being able to attend tonight's special session condemnation hearings. I have reviewed the agenda and made my concerns known. I apologize for any inconvenience my absence may cause. Thank you. Okay. And I would, at the beginning, like to recognize and welcome the Nichol students that are in our audience. Number one, 213 Oak Street in Homer. Ms. Camella?
An inspection conducted on April 23rd, 2025 indicated this structure has been renovated. It is our recommendation that this file be closed.
Okay, a motion to concur with administration by Mr. Champagne, seconded by Mr. Pleasure. Seeing the lights, vote your machines. Six A's. Is, okay. Number two, 117 Henderson Street, Structure One in Homer. Is anyone here?
Damon Bowden, 162 New Orleans Boulevard.
Sorry, hold up one second. Ms. Camella? Ms. Dionne?
This matter was continued from the October 29th, 2024 condemnation hearing. An inspection conducted on April 21st, 2025 indicated that the structure continues to be in a dilapidated condition. It is our recommendation that the structure be condemned and the owner hereby order to demolish and/or remove the structure by October 29th, 2025.
Yes, thanks. My name's Damon Bowden, 162 New Orleans Boulevard, and the manager of Plantation Trace Apartments LLC, the owner of this structure. This is, I sent a letter to the council and Ms. Stewart and President Bergeron. We're in litigation still for hurricane insurance proceeds, Plantation Trace Apartments LLC, Damon J. Bowden LLC, and Chateau Creole Apartments LLC. The litigation had been stayed for the last several months because Chateau Creole Apartments LLC is in reorganization. That stay, when I wrote you that letter last week, the stay had not been lifted. The stay has since been lifted, so we're moving forward with litigation. The judge ordered, gave dates for mediation in June. We have accepted those dates. We're waiting on the defense to accept those dates. So hopefully in June, we'll have some potential resolution with the hurricane insurance claims. If not, at that point, then we will be able to get a trial date from the court. So, you know, once we get these repairs, the insurance proceeds, we can make some repairs. But these properties are also up for, this one and the next two, which I'll mention, are in the same position. They're up for sale as well, trying to sell them if someone wants to buy them to fix them up before I can get insurance proceeds to repair them. And I request just a little bit longer to go ahead and get this insurance, hurricane insurance proceeds, so I can make those repairs.
So, Mr. Bowden, what they're recommending is to give you till October 29th, 2025. So, we'll start with that.
Yeah, that's fine. I think hopefully by then we'll have some resolution, or at least, you know, they'll either be sold or have some insurance proceeds to hopefully by then to make the repairs. Yeah, that's fine.
I'll make a motion to concur with administration on that.
That's fine. I appreciate it.
We have a motion from Mr. Councilman Amade to concur with administration, and a second by Mr. Champagne. Seeing the lights, vote your machines. Six A's. Six A's. Motion passes. Okay, 117 Henderson Street, 117 Henderson Street, Structure Two in Homer.
This matter was continued from the October 29th, 2024 condemnation hearing. An inspection conducted on April 21st, 2024 indicated that the structure is still in a dilapidated and dangerous condition. It is our recommendation that the structure be condemned and the owner hereby order to demolish and/or remove the structure by October 29th, 2025.
Motion to concur by Mr. Amade, seconded by Mr. Pleasure. No, sorry. By Mr. Champagne, sorry. Okay. Seeing the lights, vote your machine. Six A's. Okay, motion passes. 254 Corla Street in Homer. Ms. Camella?
This matter was continued from the October 29th, 2024 condemnation hearing. An inspection conducted on April 21st, 2025 indicated that the structure continues to be in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. It is our recommendation that the structure be condemned and the owner hereby order to demolish or remove the structure by October 29th, 2025.
Motion to concur by Mr. Amade, seconded by Mr. Champagne. Seeing the lights, vote your machine. Motion passes. Number five, 6408, 6410, 6414, 6416, 6420, 6422, 6424, and 6426 Alma Street.
This matter was, this matter was continued from the October 29th, 2024 condemnation hearing. An inspection conducted on April 21st, 2025 indicated that these structures continue to be in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. It is our recommendation that the structures be condemned and the owner order to demolish or remove or repair the structures by October 29th, 2025.
Motion by Mr. Champagne, seconded by Mr. Amade. Seeing the lights, vote your machines. Motion passes.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. Number six, 153 Bayou Dullard Road in Homer. Ms. Camella?
This matter was continued from the January 28th, 2025 condemnation hearing. An inspection conducted on April 21st, 2025 indicated that this structure continues to be in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner hereby order to demolish or remove the structure by May 29th, 2025.
Sir, state your name.
My name is J.C. Allen. My address is 203 Porch Lane in Homer, Louisiana. I am the church executive administrative officer that this building belongs to. At the last meeting, I was told that you were going to send some structural engineer out to do some research on the building to see was it, could it be salvaged? In the meantime, they told me to get started on cleaning up, and we didn't want to invest, you know, we don't have a whole bunch of money to invest in something that's going to be demolished. So I was waiting on that. So we did start cutting the grass and cleaning up around. In fact, we moved about six, seven trillions of trash away from that place. And, but, am I correct? Was that the statement made to me in January about the structure entirety?
Mr. Pleasure?
Well, Ms. Brown, do you want to, as far as recap from the previous meeting, but I do have a recommendation here. So I'd like to, I guess I can read that, or if you guys want to elaborate. Chris?
So the backup, you should have the backup there from the architect that is there, and it tells you everything within that backup, the cost and everything, how much it would be to actually bring this structure into a condition where it is habitable for church services.
It's, it's pretty, it's a pretty big file here, sir. So with that being said, Ms. Brown, if we look at, I'm looking at this right here.
Yep.
That recommendation that's in the back there?
Yes, sir. So we're recommending that it be condemned and for them to remove it by May 29th, 2025.
Okay. Now, Mr., your name again, sir, I'm sorry?
J.C. Allen.
Mr. Allen. Now, you guys, your ministry has moved from this location, correct? Right. So you're currently fellowshipping somewhere else?
On Andrews Street.
Right. And you guys own the property, of course?
Correct.
Now, due to the, or according to the recommendation here from the structural engineer and the folks that took a look at it and also our staff, they're, you know, they're requiring you guys to tear that building down.
Yeah, at the previous meeting, I also indicated that we were currently buying this, the new building. The reason we had to move from down there because of the flood issues and what's not. And we currently, we don't have the finances or, because we're just getting our congregation back to our new facility, our current facility. And we just don't have the finances to either renovate or demolish at this time.
Okay. Well, if you don't have the finances, and I'm going to lean on our planning department, we tear it down, we're going to send you a bill anyways. I mean, I'm being as, you know, nice as possible about that.
Correct. I understand what you're saying, and if it needs to be done.
Right, right. So with that being said, I mean, it's, the recommendation is for us to, to tear it down, Mr. Pulaski?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. I mean, we do have some funds left in the American recovery, but it's getting low. And, you know, we have properties that were condemned and are going to be demolished from the last go-around. So it's likely that if we get to this one, you know, it may not make it in what's left. So he might, yes, he might get a bill, but I wanted to say that they can contact the finance department and you can pay that off in installments. It's not like it's all due at once.
Right. And also, just for, just for the record, I know that we, I know it's pretty much those funds were going to be used for our residents of sorts, you know, that didn't really have the means to tear it down, which I understand this is a, you know, church that don't really have the funds either. But with that being said, I think if we move forward with the condemnation, Mr. Allen, there, potentially, there might be funds available, but at the same time, you could contact our finance department and we can set something up to, you know, to move forward with the condemnation. And it's the same as you paying for it the day of, you know, to a contractor. You just get a little bit more time with us here at the parish to do that.
Okay, I understand. I'd appreciate that, too. Can I get any kind of information on the cost that I can take back to our people to let them know? I don't want to have...
Well, that's not something that we really can give as a cost here tonight.
Correct.
What we would have to do is, I'm pretty sure, and you guys can kind of help me out, we would send that out for bid by contractor. They would have to go out, take a look at it, and assess and do all that, and then they'll give us a number of what it'll cost to, to tear it down. And then at that point, we'll know what it would cost, and you guys can set something up with them to, so we can recoup those funds. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to concur with administration. And from there, Mr. Allen, we could give you, well, I guess we would, we'll give you a number to our finance department, or, I don't know, you probably can give these guys here a call, Ms. Brown, and they can kind of keep you posted on, you know, how the, how the timeline is going there, if that's okay with you guys. Okay, all right, easy enough.
A motion to concur by Councilman Pleasure and, oh, sorry, Kevin.
I was just wondering if there was any way, do we know what the average square foot demolition costs are right now? That we could kind of give a gauge?
Yeah, the average, it's between three to $10,000 currently.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Motion by, to concur by Mr. Pleasure, seconded by Ms. Amade. Seeing the lights, vote your machines. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number seven, 7347 Park Avenue in Homer. Ms. Camella?
An inspection conducted on April 21st, 2025 indicated this structure has been torn down. It is our recommendation that this file be closed.
Who's second? Oh, motion by Mr. Amade, seconded by Mr. Champagne. Seeing the lights, vote your machines. Motion passes. And Ms. Alicia, could you, okay, thank you. Number eight, 6851 West Park Avenue in Homer. Ms. Brown?
An inspection conducted on April 21st, 2025 indicated this structure has been renovated and the accessory structure has been demolished. It is our recommendation that this file be closed.
We have a motion from, to concur administration by Mr. Champagne, seconded by Ms. Amade. Seeing the lights, vote your machines. Motion passes. Number nine, 7719 Main Street in Homer.
An inspection conducted on April 21st, 2025 indicated this structure has been renovated and secured. It is our recommendation that this file be closed.
Mr. Champagne has made a motion to concur with administration, seconded by Mr. Amade. Seeing the lights, vote your machines. Motion passes. Number 10, 7311 Shrimpers Row in Dulack. Ms. Brown?
This matter was continued from the January 28th, 2025 condemnation hearing. An inspection conducted on April 22nd, 2025 indicated that this structure is being renovated. So it is our recommendation to condemn the structure, but give the owner six months.
Sir, please, your name and address, please?
James Soleil, 7311 Shrimpers Row. Based on, you know, the letter, the certified letter that I get, and, you know, listing the things that need to be corrected, I feel as though I've corrected those. Those, those pictures is blurred. That's, that's a new roof on there. All the windows are in place. The doors are in place. And the grass is cut. So I've met all the criteria, so I'm, I'm just asking respectfully that we can close this case and move on to...
Sorry, Mr. Babin.
James, you've done a lot of work on this house, okay? And for sure, we're not going to condemn it. What timeline do you think, I mean, the next thing would be the exterior siding. I mean, you have plans over the next?
Absolutely. In a perfect world, I'd love to have that done before hurricane season, but it's time and money, right? So, I mean, you know, you got a councilman up there that realizes that I left work tonight to come here, right? Missing the opportunity to make some of that money, right?
Yeah, no, no. So... Ron and I spoke about this, and plus, you know, I know, I checked it out last week, okay?
And just based on the fact that, you know, that, you know, we agree that, you know, it's not in a, you know, it's no longer in the shape where it's going to be condemned. I felt like I've, I've done everything. It's got windows. There's no broken windows. The doors, everything's good. The grass is cut. You know, the yard is clean, and, and it's just between time and money to get the siding.
I tell you, we may not be able to close it tonight, but what we're going to do is continue it for, till July 29th, okay? And that way, that might give you some time. Wait, I'm sorry. You hadn't, it was six months you gave it? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the...
Yeah, we changed it a little bit to, to kind of, you know, help the property.
No mistake. I'm looking at this, and it says July 29th. Okay, so giving you six months. Okay, so that's October...
29th.
29th, okay? So hopefully, everything will mesh in place for you by that time, because we sure don't want to tear it down, because you've done a tremendous job in getting this back to where, from where it was to where it is, okay?
One thing that I would like to advise the property owner of is that he does not have an active permit on file. The permit is pending, and it has been pending since 2024. So if he, if he does have plans to complete this structure, he would definitely need to go ahead on and get that, that permit to renovate this, continue the renovations on the structure.
Mr. Soleil, if you go get that permit, the permit is good for...
It's good for a year.
One year. I just wanted to hear it come out of your mouth, so you would, you would know, okay? Wait, hold on.
Thank you. Press it again. Okay.
No, so, once we present these locations to the council, the stipulations for permits will change. It'll, it'll, it'll line up with whatever the order will be. So if he gets that permit, it looks like, I don't know if he condemned it or continued it, but he'll have until that October 29 deadline. Yes.
All right. So you need to get a permit, and that permit is good for those six months. So we need to see some activity in those six months, all right? Go back to work and make some money. Thank you, sir.
We have a motion to continue.
Continue.
And second, by Mr. Amade. Seeing the lights, vote your machines. Motion passes. Number 11, 217 Hampton Street, Homer.
This matter was continued from our January 28th, 2025 condemnation hearing. An inspection conducted on April 23rd, 2025 indicated that this structure continues to be in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned, but, and the owner has, is hereby ordered to demolish and/or remove the structure by October 29th, 2025.
Okay. Ma'am, your name and address?
Jane Carlos on 217 Hampton Street. Jane Carlos, 217 Hampton Street.
And your intent, ma'am?
Huh?
Your intent? Your intent with the property?
What you want to tell us, ma'am?
I don't understand.
What would you like to tell us tonight?
Oh, I had called my, my deal for my godchild and have her talk to her, and I was waiting on them to come and finish my back rooms and all, and utility room. They said they were going to help me, but his brother got mad at him. He didn't finish the inside, but all he has left is all the inside. I got the door put, but he didn't put the doorknob. And I went borrowed his money from my finance. I borrowed $1,500 to try to get this repaired.
Okay. So looking at the property, just, you know, going by and drive, I didn't go around back or anything, but it looks like the exterior is pretty solid, where it's not a hazard. Is that what y'all getting back from inspection?
Definitely. I'm looking at the outside of the structure. The structure is a brick structure. It's just that the inside is caving in. Yeah, so the very last picture that you see is, is the ceiling and stuff that's coming down inside of that structure. So...
So what's y'all recommendation?
We recommend to condemn it, but then grant six months to allow, you know, the property owner to work on it, get repairs done.
So, Ms. Carlos, you representing Ms. Amory today? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Or is that the wrong name?
It's Ms. Jane Carlos.
This is Jane Carlos.
Oh, okay. I'm looking at the owner name, and, okay. I just wanted to make sure who I was talking to.
Yeah. You know my family.
Well, I know your family, but I see a different name on this paper, so...
Yeah, I know.
So, Ms. Carlos, if you had six months, you can get this squared away and taken care of?
I am trying the hardest I can. I've been after them. Asked Miguel to try to finish the bottom of that front end, and he just did the wall. And you remember, last time I came, I had to get on him to do that wall. It cost me $2,000. That's how much it cost me. I had to pull out of the bank, what I had in my savings.
Lord, Lord. Well, I'm so sorry. I know financial times are tough, but unfortunately, we got a very difficult job. Of course, you know, you got neighbors, you know, you know, people on the other side of the coin, right? They like to see, you know, some nice pristine properties.
But I'm going to go back and live in my home.
So all you, all you really need is to get that ceiling repaired, right?
Yeah, the ceiling.
Because the roof's not leaking no more, right?
No.
That's all fixed.
Yeah, that's all fixed. That's all brand new. That cost me $15,600, no, $16,500.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
They formed the one that gave me the money to do the roofing. That was during the storm.
Okay, Ms. Carlos.
I had a tree that fell on my house.
Yes, ma'am. Hold on one second?
So she does have some flashing that's exposed, that's allowing rain to get up under there. So that's something that would need to be repaired. But then furthermore, her permit expired on April 19th, so she would need to go ahead on and try to get an extension on that.
I called this afternoon.
Okay. Ms. Carlos, I'm going to take the recommendation of nuisance and abatement. We're going to allow you six months, okay?
Okay.
You know, try to do what you can. I mean, I know you got family. I know you got people, some youngsters and all, that can come in and maybe at least, you know, get all that ripped out, right? Get all that ripped out. If your roof's not leaking no more, if they can take out the bad stuff.
Yeah.
You know, then you can focus on the repair after. And if they can clean that up, and there's not a lot of mold or anything that's accumulated, maybe you can move back in your house, okay? Because I want you to be back in your house, too, Ms. Carlos. We all do, okay? So we appreciate you coming tonight, but that's going to be my, I'm going to motion to accept the recommendation.
Furthermore, my next door neighbor had this call. I went home in 2022. She said I had a gas leak in my house. I got this paper right here. I found this on my door around in December of 1922. I went and checked it out. I went and checked my house at the time, and that's when they found out I had a gas leak. They took the meter out. The gas company came down and took my meter. And they were trying to say the inside, about the inside, inside leak is investigation is not done. It says by permit before to reconnect on gas.
Ms. Carlos, unfortunately, we can't... Unfortunately, we can't help you at all with that th- this evening. Uh, but what we're going to do, like I said, six months, so I'm going to accept the recommendation from administration and that's going to be my motion, okay?
Okay.
And if you need something, you call me.
All right.
Okay.
Motion by Mr. Wazan to concur with administration.
Thank you.
Second by Mr. Hamner, seeing no lights, vote your machine. Motion passes. Three zero zero nine Hickory Circle in Homer.
Attorney Dennis Wiggins, on behalf of the mortgage company.
One, one second.
You passed one.
I did.
Fifty-three sixty-one West Main. Okay, we'll go, we, okay, three thousand nine.
Okay, no. Okay, Ms. Brown?
Um, this matter was continued from the January twenty eight, twenty twenty five condemnation hearing. An inspection conducted on April twenty first, twenty twenty five indicated this structure continues to be in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner's ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, sir, your name and address?
Attorney Dennis Wiggins, on behalf of the mortgage company, uh, our office is at thirteen five forty-one Tiger Bin Road, Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Um, I'm here because the mortgage company is obviously concerned about any super liens that will prime their mortgage. Uh, this property is in foreclosure. We have an order, a writ, um, unfortunately, you can see that it's vacant, so we have had trouble getting service. We've got a curator, uh, being appointed for service and we're going to proceed to sheriff's cell. I just don't think it's going to happen before May twenty ninth. But at this point, the mortgage company can't take any, uh, actions because we, they don't own it.
Okay, Ms., uh, Ms. Brown, could you, uh, repeat the, uh, recommendation there for us, please?
Sure, our recommendation is to con- um, condemn the structure and the owner hereby ordered to demolish and or remove the structure by May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, um, this is Ms., uh, Ms. Shovan's district and I'll, uh, make a motion that we concur with the administration.
No objection as to the time, please.
Sorry?
No objection as to the time.
You objecting to the time?
Yeah, we just want more time. I mean, it's going to go to foreclosure. I mean, it's, it's sheriff's cell, but I mean, it takes as long as it takes, you know?
Ms. Go ahead.
Um, I would recommend giving a little bit more time after the condemnation. Not, you know, six months, but that's my recommendation.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is my problem. I have a little old lady that's sitting right next to it and she has been begging since Ida to get this done. I'm not letting her down. I'm not letting her down, and this is the reason why. Because it's been dilapidated for a long, long time. I made the call myself to the mortgage company and begged them to go in and at least just tear down, do what you can with some of the stuff. And they put me on cue and said, um, send me a note.
Yeah.
I sent them a note. Okay. I cannot do this to, this little old lady's husband just passed. She's got nobody there, she is scared to death of living by this place because of the snakes, the rats, people that go in and out, so.
Yeah, it's filthy, I mean, it's just a disgusting rat hole, nope.
And I'm thinking.
Nothing to the merits.
And, and I will tell you this, I told the same person I talked to in the mortgage company, how about you come down from Pennsylvania or Connecticut, and, and I don't remember which one it was, and you come live next door to it. And let's see if you're going to like it. And she said, no, thank you.
I do, I think that they don't feel comfortable taking any actions on the home while it's still, is technically owned by Herman Fleming. I think that's the problem, and the FEMA hold delayed, because when FEMA holds happen, we can't proceed with the foreclosure. Um, but I had to ask.
Right. Nope, totally understand, Mr. Wazan.
Yeah, uh, I just wanted to make sure that I understood, like, you, you're gonna, uh, not take the recommendation from legal on this issue. I just want to make sure, because that's what legal did, made a recommendation, so I want to make sure you're clear on that.
No, I am very clear on it.
I just wanted to make sure.
I'm very clear, I'm also clear on the little old lady that lives next door to it. So bring it on, this would be my thing. What? Do it again, sorry. No, it's my fault, can you do it again? No, we did. I did. Hit it again? There you go. Okay, so what kind of time are you indicating?
I think three months.
We would take three months.
Three months? Just so that we can look at the suit and see what's going on.
This little lady calling me.
And determine if TPCG has any liability here, um.
Okay.
You know?
Go ahead.
I've got a copy of the, uh. I, I mean, three months helps.
Yeah, two to three months.
Yeah.
Right, so you're saying go with legal?
Yeah.
Okay, well, three months, I mean. All right, thanks. All right, um, I'm going to go with legal, concur with legal.
I make a motion that we, um, concur with legal and, um, the three months and, um, give you guys a chance to do whatever you have to do.
And we'll press to get it into the sheriff's cell as fast as possible. If someone buys it, it can be their problem. If the bank buys it, they'll have to make a move.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we, uh, continue this for ninety d- Condemn, yeah, okay. Thanks, Josh.
Sorry.
I'll make a motion that we, um, keep the property condemned, but give them ninety days to, um, take further action on the property.
Okay, motion by Mr. Pledgers, seconded by Mr. Amade. Vote your machines. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, number thirteen, um, fifty-three sixty-one West Main Street in Homer.
This matter was continued from the January twenty eight, twenty twenty five condemnation hearing. An inspection conducted on April twenty first, twenty twenty five indicated this structure continues to be in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner hereby ordered to demolish and or remove the structure by May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five.
Anyone here for it?
Motion to concur with administration.
Motion by Mr. Amade, seconded by Mr. Pledger. Vote your machines. Motion passes. Fourteen, one thirteen Brandon Drive in Homer.
An inspection conducted on April twenty second, twenty twenty five indicated this structure is now in compliance and we recommend that this file be closed.
Motion to concur with administration by Mr. Shampine, seconded by Mr. Amade, seeing no lights, vote your machine. Motion passes. Two oh three Lebron Street in Homer. I didn't see it. Okay. It didn't come through on here. No. No, no, okay. So we're at one, we're at two oh three Lebron Street in Homer. Ms. Brown?
This matter was continued from the January twenty eight, twenty twenty five condemnation hearing. An inspection conducted on April twenty first, twenty twenty five indicated that this structure continues to be in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five.
Ma'am, your name and address?
Um, it is two oh three Lebron Street, I'm Phyllis Aver. Now, my living address is in Alabama now.
Okay, and your intent with the property?
I'm down just for this hearing and trying to get stuff out. This is the first chance I've had to come down since I lost my husband, six months ago. Um, it's been a rough few years since Ida. He was diagnosed with dementia, so I was spending a lot of caregiving during all this time.
Yes, this is Corley. Okay, Mr. Amade.
So you said you were here to, um, get your belongings out of it. You have no intention of being able to repair it?
We have someone coming out tomorrow to look at the midsection where the roof was lost and everything, about at least getting it partially, the bad part done.
Okay. Well, Madam Chairman, what I'll do is I'll make a motion to condemn and give them ninety days. Would, what you have to do, if you're going to start doing repairs, you're going to have to get with the permits office and get a permit to get that started. And then if we see progress in ninety days, then we'll make adjustments as necessary.
Thank you.
Sorry, my name is Zanna, eleven oh eight Morrison Avenue. I'm here in the city helping her on her behalf as she's out of state. I do have somebody coming over, I have had three contractors look at the property several times. Unfortunately, because she has been away and her husband passing, it's been really difficult for her to come her belongings. I have done my best to try to keep up with the yard on her behalf and then get her belongings. However, the property is in a three structure built since the original building and only the damages are made on the middle part of the building. So if we can at least get that demolished and restructured, the whole building itself, it should not needed a completion demolition, it should only be the middle part of it. I do have somebody coming in tomorrow to, while she's here, to take a look at it.
Okay, well, we'll do that, and like I said, we'll give you ninety days. If you can get a, decide whatever you're going to do after you meet with those people and then, um, get a permit going and start the work. And then we'll see what's accomplished in ninety days and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. Amade to condemn and ninety days, ninety days, seconded by Mr. Shampine, any lights? Vote your machines. Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, next, one thirty-three High Ridge Drive in Homer, Ontario. Uh, Ms. Brown?
This matter was continued from the January twenty eight, twenty twenty five condemnation hearing. An inspection conducted on April twenty first, twenty twenty five indicates that this structure continues to be in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five.
Anyone here for the property?
Concur with the administration to, uh, condemn and give them thirty days, well, till twenty ninth.
Okay, motion by Mr. Babin to concur with administration, seconded by Mr. Amade, seeing no lights, vote your machines. Motion passes. Okay, forty-seven forty-four North Bayou Black Drive in Gibson. Ms. Brown?
This matter was continued from the January twenty eight, twenty twenty five condemnation hearing. An inspection conducted on April twenty second, twenty twenty five indicated that this structure is in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five.
Anyone here for forty-seven forty-four North Bayou, Bayou Black Drive? Okay.
I spoke to the owner today and the, um, with the owner's son today, and they all concur that, um, the structure needs to be demolished.
Motion to concur with administration by Mr. Amade, seconded by Mr. Shampine, seeing the lights, vote your machines. Motion passes. Eighteen, two seventy-seven Corlos Street in Homer. Ms. Brown?
This matter was continued from the January twenty eight, twenty twenty five condemnation hearing. An inspection conducted on April twenty first, twenty twenty five indicated that this structure continues to be in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner hereby ordered to demolish or remove the structure by October twenty ninth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, sir, your name and address?
Randy Galliano, one forty-five Morrison Avenue.
And your intent?
Hmm?
Your intent with the property, what are your plans with the property?
Well, I had gotten a permit, but it took me till February the twenty fourth to get the permit, and they told me I couldn't work on it till then. And I went in there and we started removing all of the sheet rock and getting the tree that went through the roof out of the house. And we took the kitchen cabinet apart and we got a bunch of stuff done. But three and a half weeks after I started on it, I had to get a pacemaker installed. And then three days after it got put in, the, the leaves failed on it, I had to wait three weeks for another one to get put in. And I have two more weeks in the sling before I can work on it again. And I do have help once I get started on it.
Mr. Amade?
So, Mr. Randy, what they're recommending is six months, you think you'll be able to?
I should be able to get a good bit of it done in six months.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion to concur with administration. That's going to give you till October twenty ninth. Be sure that you stay up on your permit and you get some work done, they're going to re-inspect it and then we'll make, um, a determination after that. If you're close and, and it looks like you're about done, we'll give you a little bit more time, but, um, if you got the help to go in there and do it, I think six months would be, be enough time.
It should be, I should be able to get a good bit accomplished, at least have it where it's secure, where it's not dangerous.
Okay. So that's, Ms. Courtney, you have something to add?
Just for the record, I was appointed ad hoc to make notice on, uh, Regions Bank and the Louisiana Department of Revenue as lien holders. Um, and, uh, I did so, uh, via certified mail. Thank you.
Thank you, so.
So a motion to.
My motion is to concur with administration.
Okay, motion to concur with administration by Mr. Amade, seconded by Mr. Babin. Vote your machines. Motion passes. Okay, thank you. Fifty-eight seventy-three Grand Cayenne Road, Homer, Dulac.
The initial complaint was received on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. An initial inspection was conducted on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Notices were issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty second, twenty twenty-five indicated that this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner hereby ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, sir, your name and address?
My name is Lonzo Levine.
And your address?
Seven zero eight May Street, Homer, Louisiana.
And your intent with the property?
Um, I need time to get it demoed, it's, uh, my father's property. Um, he had a stroke, um, I'm power of attorney over him. And, um, I was just notified yesterday about this. And, um, I'm just working on getting it demoed if I'm granted some time, you know?
Okay, uh, how much time do you think you need to get it done? I mean, can, can you get it done in the thirty days that she's, that they?
I'm gonna need more time, like I said, I, I was just notified about this.
I tell you what we're going to do, we're going to condemn it and give you till, uh, ninety days, that would be the July twenty-ninth meeting, okay? Camilla, is that, uh, is that the next meeting? Okay.
Now, listen, um, I was told prior that he had some kind of restore assistance with this, could I?
Well, again, a- as, a- as we talked about earlier, we don't give assistance to rebuild. Okay, there may be some, some, uh, programs out there for tearing it down. As Mr. Pulaski said earlier, we had a pocket of money that came from the federal government. We've been using up that money over the last year on demolishing homes.
Okay.
So, and there's still some that have been demolished or, or been condemned, I should say, already, that are on that list to get that money. I- if, if in fact the time comes up and we have to tear it down, if there's money available, then naturally that you would, you would fall into that category. But as one that Mr. Pledger had earlier, again, if you don't have the resources at that time and let, and we'll just use these figures. Now, let's say it costs ten thousand dollars to tear it down. The parish would pay for it, but then bill you, and you can get with finance department and they let you pay it over time. You don't have to come up with the whole ten thousand. And again, I'm just using that figure, I don't know how accurate that would be, all right? So my recommendation is going to be to condemn it, all right, because it has to come down, but give. Because it has to come down, but give you ninety days to try to get it down, okay?
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Babin to condemn with ninety days. Seconded by Mr. Hamner. Vote your machines. Motion passes. And Chris, if they need the assistance, the financial assistance, like to be able to pay, do they, who do they need to contact? Like, they need to make sure that they contact them, right?
Right, it would be the parish finance department is who they need to contact. But the procedure would go, you know, the, the bids come in. We send the con, a bid's awarded, contractor goes out, performs the work. The contractor invoices the parish, the parish pays the contractor. Once that happens, then the finance department can set up the pay, structured payment with the property owner.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're on twenty, right? Two sixty-seven Lower Country Drive, Berg. Ms. Brown?
An inspection conducted on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four indicated this structure is now occupied, so we recommend to close this file.
Courtney Alcock, I was appointed a, an attorney ad hoc. Uh, and I made, um, the usual attempts to contact and, uh, ran a whereabouts ad, but I've, I've had no contact with anyone.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion, uh, on behalf of Mr. Steve Chelsclaire. Um, make a motion to concur with administration on this one.
Motion by Mr. Pledger, seconded by Mr. Rozan. Vote your machines. Motion passes. Eight oh one Grand Cay Road in Homer.
The initial complaint was received on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. An inspection was conducted on September sixth, twenty twenty-two. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four indicated that this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation, um, to condemn the structure and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Sir, your name and address?
Uh, my name is Neil Abear. Uh, six Amarillo Drive is my address. Uh, I'm the owner of this property and, um, I, I tried to contact the abatement department as soon as I received this letter and I haven't, I was unable to talk to them about what the problems were with the property. There was a list of, uh, concerns and I addressed those concerns and everything's been taken care of. Um, uh, it says here that the property was abandoned, it's not abandoned. I pass by it, uh, twice a day, every day. I have another business on Grand Cay Road. Um, the center part of the building is an equipment room, this is an old car wash, but the center part of the room is an old, uh, equipment room that I'm using for personal storage. I'm actually utilizing the building. Uh, so I make, I make trips there. One, uh, is, uh, one of the concerns was about the weeds. Um, I have a lawn care service, they, you know, cut the grass, they actually sprayed it. And it was sprayed on February twenty-fifth and April tw- April sixteenth. And according to the pictures, there's actually no weed growth, no grass growth. The, another one is rodents. Uh, the only closure, enclosure is that center building and I have rope, uh, rat bait in there. So I, there is no rodent, I've never seen a rodent in there, never had any damage from rodents. They were worried about deterioration, deterioration and rotting, uh, material. It's a brick and mortar building, it's, it's actually a metal building and each, each of the supporting structures is surrounded by brick and backfilled with concrete. The only thing that, uh, actually got storm damage is the mansard, which is the decorative, um, skirting around the top of the roof. The roof is intact, it's, it's watertight. Uh, it's just a little decorative, uh, metal around the top that, that got damaged. All of that's been removed. Uh, the, the, the metal structures that, that are up there are all screwed, bolted and welded. So, I, I mean, it's a very firm and strong building, so I'm not sure what they mean by dilapidated and rot and deterioration. Can somebody please help me out there?
Okay, so, but what is your intent with, I mean, even on the roof?
Well, the center part I'm using for personal storage right now. And I, I would like to put it on the market, I mean, but there's, uh, I had it on the market a few years back. And that was during COVID and, uh, they really didn't get any bites on it at that point in time, but, but that's, that would be my intent. I mean, I'm, I'm damn, I am maintaining the property, I, I'm keeping it clean and, and, uh, and, and there is no rodents, there is no weeds, the grass to take care of. Uh, there was, uh, some trash on the property. When I got this letter, I made a trip by there, the, my lawn service didn't pass by over the winter, so some of the trash accumulated during the winter. Now, all of that's been taken care of, so I, other than a, a little bit of concrete in the back property, I, there's really nothing wrong with it.
Okay. Chris?
So if it's not going to be condemned, if that's what you're thinking, council members, then it's the property maintenance code that's gonna come into play with the parish, because, I mean, look at it.
I know.
I mean, just look at it. So, um, you know, I understand that it, you know, there's all kinds of things that you can do with an old car wash. Um, you can fix it up and reopen it as a car wash, you can convert it to any, uh, number of other uses. But leaving it in this state, that is what's wrong with the parish right now, is this kind of attitude. And, I mean, it's common sense.
Why did I get a letter saying that it was dilapidated and, and that dangerous to the public? There is a, some graffiti on the walls that somebody had done, but you can't see it from the road. It's in the back of the building, you can't see it from the road.
So when a structure looks the way that structure does, it can attract other problems. We're talking about criminal activity, obviously you've got graffiti. Um, I mean, I don't know if any of those, it doesn't look like those, the structural, the steel or metal structures are loose or broken, but sometimes we have that and that stuff comes apart in storms. Um, so, you know, then it damages other properties that are just fine. It's just, it's the, it's the broken window effect. You know, when a property looks the way that property looks, it just brings the other properties down and attracts problems.
So I pass by it twice a day, every day, on the way to my office. And when I do see somebody hanging around there, I, I remove them from the property. If I see them more than once, I'm usually calling the police to have them take care of it.
Because you got people on the property, that, thank you for proving my point.
It's an open, open property, there is no enclosure other than the one locked building.
Put a fence around it.
Okay. Mr. Pledger?
Okay, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add also, he, uh, he say he passes twice, twice a week, but
Twice a day.
Twice a day, but we've had this location at least five times within the last two to, in two years. So, since twenty nineteen, we've, it's a repeat location, we've had it for, um, tall grass.
Apparently we had one notice for, for grass and I got a new lawn service.
We've had it since twenty nineteen several times, so he may now be passing twice a day, but, um, it's an ongoing situation at this location. And as Chris said, it's the appearance of what it looks like. That's why people are coming to the property to do whatever they want to do there, so it can cause other issues for the neighboring properties also. So, so we're asking that we do, he be ma, he, he be forced to do something o- other than what this property is currently looking like.
Thank you.
Um, Ms., uh, Ms. Brown, can you repeat the recommendation for administration, from administration?
It's our recommendation that the property be, uh, condemned and the owner hereby ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, I make a motion to concur with administration.
Mr. Rozan?
Okay, I just wanna make sure I understand. So, Mr. Pulaski, unless I misunderstood you, your intention, I think that's what you said, is not to condemn this property, but to cite them?
No, I said.
Uh, I mean, that's what I heard you say, I might have misheard.
If your intention is not to condemn.
Not to condemn.
If that's.
If the council's intention.
If this isn't condemned, then I'm gonna be bringing it to our chief building official and the regulatory division to follow up on a property maintenance code violation. But if it's condemned, then I don't need to do that.
Okay, I misunderstood you, I thought that's what you had said. Uh, just one question, sir? Uh, do you dispute anything in these pictures? Cause I, I think they were taken last in October, if I'm not mistaken?
No, they were taken in April, April twenty-second.
Okay, I'll look it in a.
Okay, so, I was trying to get clarification, cause I did receive the letter and it said I had twenty-one day, or, I'm sorry, fifteen days to rectify the situation. I went out to the property, there's no grass, there's no rodents. There was trash on the property, uh, will admit that. I did clean up the property, I have even trimmed the bushes, I did that last weekend. Uh, so I did everything that, of their concerns that was on the list, and I thought the thing was rectified. I thought it was, I thought it was resolved. And then I got a letter from the attorney saying that to come tonight. Now, I did take, I do have pictures of, as of yesterday. And, I mean, it shows, those pictures are pretty pixelated, but it does show, uh, I mean, it, it doesn't look bad. I mean, it's, it's not, other than the, from the front, you can't see the graffiti that I do have in the back. I can paint the walls if that's necessary, I mean, that's, that's not a problem. But the only, uh, thing that is missing from the building, it's a sturdy building, but the only thing that's missing is the skirting around the top of the building. And that's the mansard, that's, that's only there to actually hide the equipment that would be on the roof. There is no equipment on the roof anymore. That, that got damaged from the storm. The, they did have pieces that were still up there. I got up there and removed all of the pieces that could potentially be a danger or hazard or something like that.
I understand all that, I just wanted to make sure that what you saw reflected what it is today. Cause when I read this, it looked like I saw October, uh, twenty-four, I thought that was the last.
I'd be happy to show you the pictures of what it looked like as of yesterday.
Yes, sir, and look, uh, look, I'm an advocate for any business, right? If somebody's gonna do something, but I also agree with Mr. Pulaski, uh, on what he said as well, right? Because what he's saying is true. Uh, but if there's any way we can salvage a potential business in this parish, obviously I wanna do that. I'd like to see that happen, but, uh, I just wanted to make sure I understood Mr. Pulaski's statement, cause I, I miss, I misunderstood what he said. So, thank y'all, okay?
So, question for you, instead of condemning it, can I, can I actually put it on the market and see if, if that's a, and so if somebody can do something with the building?
Sir, it's your building, you own it, you can do whatever you like. We're only here for the condition of the building and what, what it does. Um, as she read, as far as, um, the effects of the community. Um, you say you pass there a couple of times a day, I understand. I'd have, I'd like to ask you a question. Um, how long has the building been like this, or the car wash?
I, it, it was run as a car wash for about fifteen years. Uh, in the, started in early two thousand. So, probably two thousand fifteen, sixteen.
So it's been like this since two thousand sixteen?
Right?
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to concur with administration?
Motion to concur with administration by Mr. Pledger. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Amade. Vote your machines. Motion passes. Thank you. One oh six Enjoron Street in Homer. Ms. Brown?
The initial complaint was received on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. An inspection conducted on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-three indicated that the structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated that this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure is condemned and the owner, um, ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Ms. Alcock?
Uh, Courtney Alcock, I was appointed attorney ad hoc on this structure. Uh, I made the usual, um, whereabouts ad and attempted to serve people via certified mail. Uh, but I had no contact with any of the owners.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Chompine to concur with administration, seconded by Mr. Amade. Vote your machines. Motion passes. Uh, next, seventeen thirteen West Main Street in Shreve. Ms. Brown?
The initial complaint was received on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. An initial inspection was conducted on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, which indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this residential mobile home be condemned and the owner hereby ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Ms., Ms. Alcock?
Courtney Alcock, I was appointed, uh, ad hoc on this and, um, I, uh, was contacted by Iris Richard, who, uh, resides in Washington DC. She sent me some information, she's the, uh, administrator for, uh, her mother's estate, uh, which comes down through the Peter Walker Estate. And, uh, she says she doesn't, uh, object to the con- the condemnation. Uh, but she just wanted to put it on the record that, uh, they had told, uh, the family members, uh, and head correspondents, which she's provided and which I'm gonna, uh, ask to make part of the record, not to place the trailers on the lot, and, uh, they did so anyway, there was a lot of multiple successions, which are outstanding. So, for what it's worth, she just wanted you to know that, that information, and I'll go ahead and provide that.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Amade. Seconded by Mr. Babin. Vote your machines. Motion passes. Um, Mr. Chompine?
I noticed there was one that was missing, that's not on the agenda, that's in the book. Three oh six Grace Street?
It looks like it's out of order or something.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, we'll probably have to get that one continued.
Okay.
It's not on there, if it's not, yeah. Do we need to do it? Mm-mm, no.
It's not on the agenda. Okay, let's move forward. Gotcha. Okay, um, twenty-four two twelve A, Acock Street, Homer, Terrio. Ms. Brown?
The initial complaint was received on May tenth, twenty twenty-four. An inspection conducted on May tenth, twenty twenty-four indicated that this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, ma'am, your name and address?
Pull it down, Mr. Lord.
There you go.
Okay. Okay, on, on the property.
Your name and address, please?
Oh, my address is, uh, my name is Dolores Williams. And the house belonged to, you know, well, now it's ours, but was Alberta Howard residence. I tried to get help for the house, never heard more about it. So then I received a letter about debris all around it. Went into my little saving and I went down there and I cleaned and paid somebody to help me to clean that up. But now the roof done melted and I can't do no more. I can't take care of two houses. So, I guess I have to demolish it. But I hope I can have some help with the finances that can come behind me.
Mr. Babin?
Yeah.
Because it's not, it's not in no one's way. I have an on on one side, the whole house is on the other side. A lot of property back there, but.
Yeah, Ms. Dolores, I feel for you on this one, okay? But, but again, the roof is caving in, it's gonna.
Yeah, I noticed, well, I really noticed it, cause I wanted to get in there.
Sure, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna concur with administration to condemn it, give it thirty days, which puts you on that list, as we talked about a couple of other people.
Yeah, I heard, yeah.
Okay, there is a pool of money. Uh, we don't know how much is left because we don't know what's going in there. But again, if we do it in thirty days, then at least you're on that list, okay? If for some reason. If for some reason, there is no funds left available, then the parish will tear it down. And, and I, I hate to tell you a, an amount, but I used to amount ten thousand dollars before. I don't think this one would be anywhere near that, okay? But again, I'm not an expert on it. But what I'm saying is, is that if there's none available, the parish will bill you back or the family back.
Yeah, my sister and I.
And you have time to pay that off. It's not something that you'd have to come up with all that money at one time.
You just bought the person.
Sure. No, no, we understand that. There's a lot of situations like this. Unfortunately, we have a responsibility. We want to help you as much as we can. And I think this is probably the best way to try to help you, to condemn it shortened period of time, thirty days, and then, once it's torn down, then you can apply for that.
So I mean, now that the roof has fallen down and on it, nothing can come out of it, right? Because I can't have no way of getting out of it.
No, ma'am. I, I mean, that's, that's up to you because it's your problem. I mean, you have some, you talking about furnishings inside?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it would be dangerous for you to get in there, for someone to get in there. I would, I would not recommend it. But I mean, if you think, i- if you think that it's salvageable. I mean, you may try to find a nephew or whatever to try to.
Yeah, I have nobody. That's what I'm trying to tell you. I have no one.
And unfortunately, that's not a service that we can.
My nose with oxygen, I can't.
No, no, you can't go in there. That's for sure.
I can't go in there.
But let, let's do it this way. I'm gonna recommend to condemn it thirty days, and then hopefully the process will go. There'll be some funds available, and then everybody's happy. If not.
See the house go, but.
Sure, no, I, we understand that, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, it's, it's actually May twenty-ninth, okay? And then the process starts on our end. We have to get a contractor to go out there, take a look at it, to give us a bid price on it. And, and again, the contractor price is usually more than what you could have it torn down for, okay? But, you, you know, I, we, I understand the situation, but I think this is about four the best way for you.
Clean it up, so. And they tried to pull my.
Sure. Okay, I think this is about four the best way to help you in this situation, all right?
Okay, so we have a motion?
No, ma'am. What's gonna happen is, after thirty days, if it's not torn down, then the parish, Chris Pulaski's department, is gonna send a contractor out there to give us a bid on tearing it down.
Okay.
Okay, at that point, whatever that number's gonna be, it'll get torn down. And then that department will contact you. To say, it's torn down, this is what you owe the parish. At that point, then you can call our finance department and set up some type of payment to pay that off. If the money's not, if the money's not available, okay? Chris, you wanna give them the whole process?
So, uh, once the parish pays their contractor and then sends the invoice to the property owner for payment, at that point, they have so many days. I don't know if it's thirty, sixty, ninety days. They have whatever it is on that invoice to make the payment. If the payment's not made, or some structured, some form of structured payment not set up, then they will put a lien on the property. If the lien goes unpaid, it then goes on to the tax roll. And then if the taxes go unpaid. Right, but if you, if you, if the lien isn't paid off and it does go on to the tax roll, now you're gonna have on top of the normal property tax you've been paying, you would have the cost of the contractor demolition plus administrative costs. I think filing a lien in of itself is a, what, a hundred and fifty, Brianna? Hundred and five. Um, so you, you, you incur all these additional costs, so.
We're gonna go ahead and do this. Brian says he's gonna give you a call, okay? He knows y'all. And, and, and he'll help explain it a little bit more, all right? Thank y'all.
So we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Babbin to concur with administration, seconded by Mr. Amade. Seeing the lights, vote your machines. Motion passes. Two oh four Lincoln Street in Homer, Ms. Brown?
The initial complaint was received on March fifth, twenty twenty-four. An inspection conducted on March sixth, twenty twenty-four indicated that this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated that this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned. And the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, Ms. Alcock?
Courtney Alcock, I was appointed, uh, curator ad hoc to represent or to attempt service on the, um, creditor, uh, lien holder only, the IRS, which I did by certified mail. I haven't heard from him.
Yes, ma'am. Motion to concur with administration by Mr. Wazan, seconded by Mr. Amade. Seeing the lights, vote your machine. Motion passes. One twenty-three Donald Drive in Homer. Ms. Brown?
The initial complaint was received on April fifth, twenty twenty-four. An inspection conducted on April eighth, twenty twenty-four indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated that this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned. And the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Ms. Alcock?
Courtney Alcock, appointed curator, uh, ad hoc. As to the lien holder of the United States, uh, I serve them via certified mail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pledger.
All right, motion to concur with administration.
We have a motion to concur with administration by Mr. Pledger, seconded by Mr. Wazan. Seeing the lights, vote your machine. And motion passes. Three thirteen Grand Cayenne Road in Homer. Ms. Brown?
An inspection conducted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure has been demolished. It's our recommendation that this file be closed.
Motion to concur with administration.
We have a motion to concur by Mr. Pledger, seconded by Mr. Hamner. Vote your machines. Motion passes. Two oh four Oakshire Drive in Homer. Ms. Brown?
The initial complaint was received on May ninth, twenty twenty-four. An inspection conducted on May tenth, twenty twenty-four indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this residential accessory structure be condemned. And the owner hereby ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Ms. Alcock?
Uh, Courtney Alcock, attorney ad hoc, uh, as to the lien holder, Shell Point Mortgage, and I, uh, served them by certified mail.
Okay. Mo- motion to concur with administration from Mr. Wazan, seconded by Mr. Hamner. Seeing the lights, vote your machines. Motion passes. Um, fifty-four twenty-five Bayou Black Drive in Gibson. Ms. Brown?
It's our recommendation that this file is closed. The structure has been completely renovated.
Motion, motion to concur with administration by Mr. Amade, seconded by Mr. Champine. Vote your machines. Motion passes. Forty-seven sixty-nine Bayou Side Drive in Chauvin. Ms. Brown?
Um, the initial complaint was received on August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. An inspection conducted on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two indicated that this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Uh, notices was issued, an inspection conducted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated that this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned, and the owner hereby ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Ms. Alcock?
Courtney Alcock, I was appointed ad hoc on this, uh, structure, and I, uh, attempted the normal um, methods of notice, uh, whereabouts add, certified notice, and I've had no contact with anyone.
Okay. Motion to concur with administration from Mr. Amade, seconded by Mr. Champine. Vote your machines. Motion passes. Forty-seven forty-nine Grand Cayenne Road in Homer. Ms. Brown?
This property must be continued to our next scheduled condemnation hearing on July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five because ad hoc representation is needed.
Okay, state, yeah, I have a reminder. State your name and address.
I'm Roxanne Fitch at five oh five Ash Street.
Okay. Let me see, where are we? Oh, I'm sorry. Your intent with the property?
Well, we applied for that.
Oh, your name and address?
My name is Loretta Rogers. We applied, well, my mom applied for that grant, like this past hurricane, but the one before, to get it demolished with the parish, and we still didn't hear anything back from the grant money on that, so that's, I don't know. I, I, we, we want it to get demolished. Because she doesn't even live there anymore. She lives with my sister.
Go ahead, Ms. Babbin.
We, we saying, we saying that we have to delay this because no ad hoc represent, so we, gi- give me a little, this is the first time this has come up for me.
So, um, with this situation, um, there was a minor that was involved, um, with this property. And that minor needs, um, ad hoc representation. Um, so we, um, we have to hold off on, um, extending anything on this property.
That's no minor. We're the children.
Um, I believe this one, and I'm gonna have to check my files. There was a minor's mortgage against the property, is what it was. So that's a form of mortgage, um, so. But there is, um, a minor's mortgage that needs to be canceled, probably. Um, it is old, but it is still there, so, um, I can probably get your number and we can, we can discuss it.
Yeah, because we just done.
Okay, so, so my, 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 my deal with this is, is, is I don't want to delay it because an ad hoc has to be presented. Can, can, but it has to be, is, is what you're saying, all right? So, okay, Brianna, could you?
We have to make sure all parties are served properly.
All right. I'm gonna make a motion to concur with administration because, uh, because of the minor's lien. Y'all, get, get her a telephone number, and then she can explain this to y'all a little bit more. Uh, because it's, this is a legal matter. This is more so than what we deal with up here, okay?
Okay.
All right? Yeah, I, it's, those things are strange, but that, and that just, that, that lien may just need to be removed, is what she's saying. That, that, they may not be anything that you have to pay for, like, in terms of a lien. But it's still showing on the books, so therefore it's not a clear title.
Okay.
All right.
So there's a motion by, uh, Councilman Babbin to concur with administration. And seconded by Mr. Amade. Vote your machines.
And how's God find out about the first grant, like the first, not this one that just passed, the first one that my mom had applied to get the house demolished?
Yeah. Ho- hold on one second. And that motion passes, uh, Chris?
So, are you talking about the FEMA demolition program that the parish had? Okay, that's well, that program was administered by another department, not planning and zoning. Um, I know that that program is no longer accepting new applications. I, I did hear that you had said that your mom had applied for it and didn't hear anything, so I'm really not sure. I'd have to check into it to see um, what's, this is actually the second, you're the second person today to ask me um, about the status of their application in this program, so I'll reach out, when I reach out to, uh, Solid Waste Department, I'll, uh, send them your address as well.
We all had to go sign the paper because, like, my, my dad passed away, so we all had to go sign the paper for it. We all went sign, and we never heard anything about, anything else about it.
I'll have to check into it and, and get back with you, so be sure and is that their contact information?
Yeah, let's just make sure that everybody has the contact information, because it's two separate things that we're dealing with here, okay? And they're both actually out of our area of expertise here, so, all right? Thank you.
So when do we have to come back? Just, she's gonna get ahold of us? Okay.
All right, next one. Fifty-five seventy-four Highway fifty-six in Chauvin. Ms. Brown?
The initial complaint was received on March fourth, twenty twenty-four. An inspection conducted on March fifth, twenty twenty-four indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated that this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned, and the owner hereby ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
Dirk Gidry, fifty-one fourteen Bayou Side Drive, Chauvin. Uh, I just, I found out about this a couple of months ago, uh, this home belonging to my great-grandmother. And she had nine kids. They're all dead. They're spread out, and all the grandkids are spread out through the world. I just like four or five months, so I could either try to get all these people together or I'll tear it all down myself.
Okay, well, I'll make a re- recommendation to condemn it and give you till the July twenty-ninth, ninety days.
Thank you, Mr. Babbin.
You got it.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Babbin to, uh, condemn and give ninety days, seconded by Mr. Champine. Vote your machines. Motion passes. Okay. Four oh two Roberta Grove Boulevard in Homer. Um, Ms. Brown, sorry?
The initial complaint was received on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. An inspection conducted on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated that this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned. And the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Ms. Alcock?
Courtney Alcock, I was, uh, appointed ad hoc on this structure. Um, I attempted the normal, um, notice, uh, requirements, uh, uh, and whereabouts add and certified letters, um, but I've had no contact with anybody who's an owner.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Mr. Amade, seconded by Mr. Babbin to concur with administration. Vote your machines. And the motion passes. Three oh four and a half Hialeah Avenue, Homer.
The initial complaint was received on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. An inspection conducted on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure is continued to our next scheduled hearing on July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five to allow the property owner some extra time to recover and begin renovations on the structure.
Okay, your name?
Garrett O'Quinn, three oh four and a half Hialeah. And, um, my intentions were to rebuild and renovate it, but unfortunately, I got diagnosed with cancer recently, so I had to halt it, so now I'm just looking to sell the property. And at least can have some time to do that.
Okay. Motion to concur with administration by Mr. Babbin, seconded by Mr. Amade. Vote your machines.
Okay, what's the, um, date? July twenty-ninth, okay, okay.
Okay, and motion passes, so you have July twenty-ninth. Just keep up with, um.
Yeah, I know recently the grass got out of hand, and that's probably what this is from, but my dad just cut it recently again, so.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye, yeah. All right, thirty. Alright, thirty-sixty-six nineteen Shrimpers Row in Dulac, Ms. Brown?
The initial complaint was received on October fifth, twenty twenty-three. An initial inspection conducted on October sixth, twenty twenty-three indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, Ms. Alcock?
Uh I was appointed uh on this just as a, a lien holder only notice uh and I made the notice via certified mail uh to the Turbon Parish District Attorney's Office, there was a, a bond forfeiture.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to concur with administration.
Okay, motion to concur with administration by Mr. Babin, seconded by Mr. Amade, vote your machines. Motion passes. Seventy-four seventy-seven Shrimpers Row in Dulac, Ms. Brown?
The initial complaint was received on December sixth, twenty twenty-three. An inspection conducted on December eighth, twenty twenty-three indicated that this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five indicated that this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, anyone here? Okay, Ms. Alcock?
Courtney Alcock, I was appointed ad hoc on this structure, I attempted the uh customary notification procedures with the whereabouts add and certified letters, I've had no contact with any owners.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to concur with administration.
Motion by Mr. Babin, seconded by Mr. Amade to concur with administration. Vote your machines. Motion passes. Sixty-six seventy-two Shrimpers Row in Dulac, Ms. Brown?
The initial complaint was received on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. An inspection conducted on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Anyone here for the property?
I can motion concur with administration.
Motion by Mr. Babin to concur with administration, seconded by Mr. Pledger, vote your machines. Motion passes. Fifty-five thirty-two Highway fifty-six in Chauvin. Ms. Brown?
The initial complaint was received on October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. An inspection conducted on October twelfth, twenty twenty-three indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure is condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
So your, your name and, and address?
Ben Chauvin, one oh eight Little Ling. Intent was to remove the back end that was uh damaged.
Yes, sir.
And put it up for sale. If I could have more time to get this completed.
So how much more time are you?
Ninety days.
I'm just trying to figure out how you think. I, I, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the picture because I'm trying to figure out how you're gonna take half of it off and then put it for sale.
The damaged part is a back room.
Oh, okay.
It's an add-on.
It's an add-on, okay. Just go ahead and give him a little. Uh, Mr. Pledger?
I can make, I make a motion that we um keep condemned but give you ninety days to um to continue it as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is to condemn and give ninety days by Mr. Pledger, seconded by Mr. Amade, uh vote your machines. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Five ten Woodside Drive in Homer?
The initial complaint was received on December sixth, twenty twenty-three. An inspection conducted on December seventh, twenty twenty-three indicated that the structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this residential accessory structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, and your name and address, sir?
Robert Stonerock, five ten Woodside Drive.
Okay, and your intent?
I would like to have it torn down. I just need more time to collect the funds to do so. I don't have the money to tear it down right now.
Okay. Okay, so.
Okay, I make a motion that we concur with administration, uh Ms. Alcock?
I was just for the record, I was appointed to uh provide notice to the American Financial Resources Incorporated, which I did by certified mail.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a ma- a motion by Mr. Pledger, seconded by Mr. Amade, uh vote your machines.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what was going on.
Motion passes, okay, so. It is condemned, um they're gonna give you to May twenty-ninth, but it goes in through a process, so there's, there's time within that process to come down. If it is not, um if it's something that you do not do or, or you know, get someone to demolish for you, the parish comes in to do it.
Alright.
Okay, now you can also, after it's done, you can go with the financial, uh get with the financial office and you can make payments with them, you can, you can do that, it's awesome, alright, thank you. Alright, next one, nineteen twenty-one Highway fifty-five Montague, Ms. Brown?
The initial complaint was received on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. An inspection conducted on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, anyone here for the property? Mr. Pledger?
On behalf of Councilman Trust Claire, make a motion that we concur with administration.
So we have a motion on Florida to concur with administration by Mr. Pledger, seconded by Mr. Wazan, uh vote your machines. Motion passes. Uh four ten Leona Street in Homer, Ms. Brown?
The initial complaint was received on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. An inspection conducted on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to, to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Ma'am, your name and address?
Ramona Wallace, uh four ten Leona, Homer, Louisiana.
Okay, and your intent?
Um intent to demolish, I uh had some issues with uh locating one of the um legacies to the property. Um I want to ask either that um the condemnation be continued until July uh the July date so that I can come in and bring proof of uh locating that person and uh I've taken bids on the property now already. Uh just need to get that person to sign off on uh proceeding with the succession. So that I'll have legal authority to sign a contract to do the demolition. We do have sufficient uh funds in the succession to proceed with the demolition. I just need to get that individual to sign the paperwork.
Okay, Mr. Champagne?
So if I could get possibly a continuance uh to the next hearing date?
I want to ask a question of legal to find out, is, so has everybody been notified?
Um are you the representative for the estate, the administrator?
Uh not, I'm the executor in the will, but we haven't filed a succession yet and that's what I have a problem with one of the persons signing off on. And what I intend to do is, since this has come up, um if that person does not sign, I intend to go ahead and get an ad hoc appointed in the succession, so if I could get it continued to the July date, um I can get that person, if I can't get that person, I, I intend in the next thirty days to proceed with the succession irrespective of if that person signs uh the independent administration or not.
So you haven't filed any succession paperwork yet?
No.
Okay, um.
I'm trying to get the person to cooperate. Ramona Wallace.
Okay, um I would recommend continuing it until we confirm that, you know.
And what I'll do is, when I come in for the July date, is um I'll have that done and I've already taken bids and stuff, I just don't have the legal authority to go ahead and sign a contract.
Okay, but you think you're going to be appointed as the administrator?
I will be.
Okay. So that'll be, that'll make it easy.
Yeah, I need you to, go ahead, Kevin.
I'm just gonna make a motion to uh uh follow the recommendations of legal and to continue to the next uh meeting.
And what's that date, sir?
July twenty-ninth.
Okay, the motion is ba- made by Mr. Champagne to um concur with legal and.
Who's second in it, Mr. Pledger?
Mr. Pledger's second in it. Vote your machines. Motion passes.
And also, I had um had a grass abatement issue, I paid it and since that time I've been keeping up with the grass.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, eleven thirty-four Berg Street in Homer, Ms. Ber- uh Ms. Brown?
The initial complaint was received on April fourth, twenty twenty-three. An initial inspection was conducted on April fifth, twenty twenty-three, which indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this property be continued to our July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five condemnation hearing to allow the family to obtain conservatorship so that they can step in and start the renovations on the home.
Mr. Pledger?
Um I'd, I wanna make a motion to, I spoke with um with gentlemen um and I wanna make a motion to concur with administration until we can um get that worked out.
Motion's been made by Mr. Pledger, seconded by Mr. Amade to concur with administration, vote your machines. Motion passes.
Madam Chairperson, council members, thank you very much.
Thank you. Eleven oh five Division Avenue in Homer, Ms. Brown?
The initial complaint was received on October twelfth, twenty twenty-three. An inspection conducted on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-three indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five indicated that this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Good evening, uh council member, Marion.
Address?
My name is Marion Hamilton. I am, uh my address is eighty-eight eighty-five Main Street. I am the legal representative of the heirs of the property. Um and I am one of the heirs, there are three of us here and there are four out of state. Um, this is a home that was being built by our father and it was in good condition, but since Ida, uh it has been damaged a lot. Um, a, a huge pine tree fell on the roof. Uh out of my repair funds, I paid five thousand dollars to remove that huge tree off the roof. There was a metal door in front of the garage part. Someone stole the entire metal door. Um, in an effort to try to remedy this house, I applied for the FEMA uh demolition program through the parish and I applied in twenty twenty-three. And they told us that they would put us on a list and they would be contacting us. We also did a succession to recognize the heirs legally and uh I'm the executive of that succession. And then I had all the heirs sign a right of entry for demolition to go on the property. I have a copy of that right of entry and, you know, I've heard the uh other people say how they applied, but I have I have written proof that we applied back in twenty twenty-three. We're just here to find out where we are on the list, the status of the list, I've heard that funds uh they may run out of funds, but we just wanna know where we are on the list.
Okay, alright, ma'am, now the list that you applied for with FEMA, that's not a part of Terrebonne Parish, it's not a list that we um generated or started or opened up.
Well, it was called the Terrebonne Parish Demolition Program. I mean, the, the title of the right of way, I think is, has that heading.
You can go ahead, Chris.
So the FEMA demolition program was Terrebonne Parish had applied for public assistance grant money from FEMA, so it's FEMA funds that were used for that demolition program. So when you heard us talking earlier about federal funds that we have and that fund is running out, that's a different funding source. What you're talking about, that right of entry agreement that you filled out with um with Thompson Engineers, I believe it was, through their.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's, that's the same program I referred to earlier with the, the folks who were up here a little while ago. So what I'm gonna have to do is. I'm sorry?
Are you familiar with Jared Morris?
No.
Oh, okay.
So what I'll have to do is get your contact information, and now I've got three properties to follow up with and figure out what the status uh uh is, cause that wasn't something that our department was administering, but I, but I know who to reach out to, so um.
So if we're on a list, then will the con- condemnation proceeding continue until, or you're gonna continue it until you find out what our status is?
Well, if it's, one option would be to condemn and then, you know, if the program is going to do the removal, then we uh just won't proceed with the demolition at our end, we'll let the program take care of it. Um but if it's not, then, you know, at least the condemnation is in place and then we can follow up with it in our normal fashion.
Okay, through the years, we've kept the property, uh the grass cutter cut the grass last week. So we have tried to maintain this property as best we can. Hurricane Ida did a job on everyone, I know that. But uh we've paid for the removal, five thousand dollars, we did a succession, we tried to uh to get this problem solved.
Okay. I make a motion that we concur with administration.
So we have a motion from Mr. Pledger to concur with administration, do we have a second? Second, Mr. Babin. And let's take a vote, vote your machines. Motion passes, go ahead, Ms. Babin. Okay, forty-four eighteen oh one East Tunnel Boulevard in Homer, Ms. Brown?
This property must be continued to our July twenty-ninth, twenty.
You've got somebody behind you, okay.
To our July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five condemnation hearing due to insufficient service to a registered agent.
Okay, your name and address, sir?
Tyrone Tillman, um two two four Boudreaux Street in Homer.
Okay, and your intent with the property?
Well, I wanna fix the, well, I'm gonna fix the property up and rent it out. But I need more time because I done had two different surgeries and and waiting on to get approved for another surgery, so I just didn't have the time to go out and look for contractors. So I've been just trying to keep the yard up.
Mr. Pledger.
Okay. Now, this is the one you had talked to me on and had the tree removed and all that, right? The power lines and all that stuff. Okay. What was the, um, recommendation, Ms. Brown?
So the recommendation was to continue it to our July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five condemnation hearing.
All right, make a motion, make a motion to concur with administration.
So there's a motion by Mr. Pledger to concur with administration, seconded by Mr. Amade. Vote your machines. Oh, no, Mr. Babbin, I'm sorry.
So you can't get no extension?
Vote your machines. Motion has passed.
Give me a call, Mr. Tillman.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And we are on to forty-five forty seventy-nine Grand Cayenne Road in Homer. Ms. Brown.
The initial complaint was received on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. An inspection conducted on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, indicated that this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Ma'am, your name and address, please?
Trang Burke, four twenty-one Oak Lane Lulu.
Okay. And your intent with the property?
Repair.
Mr. Babbin?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, have you applied for a permit? Uh, what, what, what's your timeframe here? What, you know?
Um, my first permit was pulled five-five two thousand twenty-three. My children and then we, uh, were on the roof fixing the roof after the permit was, I guess it was granted. Uh, and then I had some, and then my children then, I had three children. I still have three children. My children then were eight, eleven, and fifteen. Since then, and then Ida, that was when Ida hit, I take care of everything. And since then, uh, now my children are, oh, since then I've had cancer in the family. Uh, I have an autistic mental child and everything is taken care of. So there was a pause during that time. Uh, cancer is okay. I'm the main caregiver. So now my children are, uh, twelve, fifteen, and nineteen. So I'm ready to roll. I'm ready to roll.
Okay, well, the recommendation is, is to condemn it and give you thirty days. If you tell them, if you telling me that you don't have a permit yet, so you have to apply?
No, no, the second permit, yeah, the second permit is pending.
Is pending, okay.
Yes, the second permit is pending. I applied for that, uh, four twenty-two. And Ms. Janine said, okay, well, do this. I did that. I called her back. And then she said, okay, I need a list of materials. And so we got our low shopping cart done. Sent that to her. I haven't heard anything. Gave her a few days, called her back, couldn't even get voicemail, couldn't leave any voice messages, talked to other people.
It sounds to me you, you're in the process. You wanna get it done.
Yes, sir.
So I'm, I'm gonna condemn it, but I'm gonna give you ninety days. Which means in these next ninety days, once that permit comes through, you start doing some work on it. When it's gonna come up again in ninety days, we'll probably close the case if you've made enough progress on it.
My problem right now is permitting can't, the permitting office, I, I can't get them, you know, back to me, getting back to me fast enough. I have the land surveyor coming Thursday. I'm afraid to even touch my property. I mean, can I, can I even uh, fix some, you know, four broken windows? I
For sure.
Yeah, Mr. Pledger, can you help us out with this one?
Yes, so what we've talked about, uh, Camilla and Dion and I, along with the permit office, is to coordinate, um, and I think one of the reasons why that permit hadn't been issued is because of, we've run into in the past where we have some confusion. Well, the permit, I have six months to start and one year to complete, but the condemnation was thirty days or sixty days or ninety days. So what we're doing is waiting until these condemnation hearings, seeing what timeframe you guys are setting. So I have, during this meeting, I've been keeping track of all the permits that tomorrow, uh, the permit office will either issue if they haven't been and adjust the expiration dates to coincide with what dates you guys are setting.
So what it means in, in short?
ASAP.
It's gonna be done as soon as possible, so then you can start and that gives you three months to show some improvement on it. And then we take a look at it again in thirty, in ninety days.
Like I said, I'm, I'm waiting for permit.
Well, you know what I'm just saying? He, he just said, by now that we've taken action here, that permit will be done as soon as possible and it'll be in your hands and you can get started.
So we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Babbin to condemn and give ninety days.
Correct.
A second by Mr. Pledger. Vote your machines.
Ninety days to finish, ninety days to get started, ninety days.
Motion passes.
Show us.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Bit on it.
Absolutely.
In the July, you're gonna get a, you're gonna get another notice to come to the July twenty-ninth meeting. And at that point, no, she may, will not?
No, not when, once you've condemned it, no, they won't get noticed to return to a hearing.
All right. But let, let me, let me put my line back on.
Yes, sir.
But, but what you're gonna have to do is you're gonna have to call that office and show what you've done to it, okay? Otherwise, it, it's condemned. You, you follow what I'm saying? But if you show improvement after the permit, you move along the process, then, then it can be, the condemnation will be stopped is what we're trying to tell you.
Mr. Amade.
Or done, if you don't do anything.
That's what I'm trying to tell you. I'm ready to go. I'm ready to roll, but I'm, I can't even get a callback sometimes.
But what, what they just explained is, is until we had this hearing tonight
Okay.
and made a motion to condemn and give ninety days, now that that's done, that department will move forward with issuing you the permit. Okay?
Okay, okay.
All right?
My name's Terry Stellic. I live at one twenty-one in Oak Lane. I'm her neighbor.
Okay.
I just wanna, there've been a number of issues tonight where they said that, um, there's been significant improvement, so we moved that it should be closed. Is that what we're driving towards?
That's what you're working towards, okay? The, the ball is now in your court is what it boils down to. We, we condemned it, but we giving you ninety days. So if, if you show a great improvement, then within ninety days, this process could possibly be closed. But again, it's, it's all on your court. Once that permit is given, okay?
Mr. Amade?
Sure.
Let her.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm kind of a rule follower, so I get kinda stuck. I mean, I'm, I am afraid to even fix a broken window without the permit. So what am I allowed to do since we're weakened warriors?
Today's Wednesday, today's Tuesday. Hopefully by the first, no later than the first of the next week, she's gonna have that permit. I'm just, I'm grabbing.
The note, the note that I put on this particular one with the permit numbers, issue the permit once all needed information is submitted and set expiration date is July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. If you need any additional information, please reach out to the applicant. So that permit, the permit office is going to, tomorrow morning, when they get in, they're gonna see that email and that's what they're gonna start responding to.
Okay, so that permit office is gonna contact you, correct?
Correct. If they need anything, otherwise the next email she gets from the permit office will be the permit.
Will be the permit, okay?
I'm looking forward to working on the weekend.
Okay, let, let's hope it all goes to, thank you.
All right, Dion. Um, we always tell them to call y'all, but wouldn't it be better to call us? Cause we have to make a motion to rescind the condemnation or whatever, correct?
Yeah, and, and usually when they do call us, we, we then
You reach out to us?
Yes, yes.
No, I don't wanna speak for y'all. I'd rather y'all ask us.
Okay, thank you. Next one, fifty fifty-two Alcee Street, Homer, Gray. Ms. Brown.
The initial complaint was received on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. An initial inspection conducted on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this residential accessory structure be condemned and the owner hereby ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, state your name and address, please?
Darren Olivier, forty-four oh two South Town Mandalay.
And your intent?
This is my parents' property and this is a, uh, a, a shed that my dad used. It was a, a garden shed. It's not a residence. So anyway, with all that being said, my dad passed away three years ago. My mom just recently passed, but we had the place up for sale just by word of mouth. And we had a guy, we have a, a, a young couple looking to buy the house, not this, uh, the big house. And we had acquired a permit to demolish this. We was gonna do away with it. But the guy that's buying, the couple that's buying the house would really like for it, cause he is a contractor and he would like to renovate it. Uh, and it looks like they should have, they're in the process, they're actively in the process of acquiring a loan. They had a loan that they were, was already granted. But actually, the day that the deal was made, that they said, okay, we want the house, my mom passed away. So we had to go through the process all over again to, to do all the red tape to get the house, to be able to sell the house.
A new closing date? Do they know one yet?
Nah, I talked to him today and he said he's, they, the bank, since they was already, uh, had a loan that they was and, but in a, with the process of doing, getting all the, uh, it elapsed. So they're actively now and he's thinking about a month, he told me. They just had a baby too and they had some trouble with the baby. Uh, they had a baby about a month and a half ago and it had this, like, eight days in the hospital. So they had some issues that they were dealing with.
So, so if we give them ninety days, you think that's everything?
I can, I feel confident that, uh, we will know by then if we need to demolish it or not.
Right. Uh, Okay, well, that's, that's what I'm do. I'm the councilman for that area, so I'll make a motion that we condemn and give them ninety days. Um, and just stay in touch with the nuisance abatement office as to the progress of it so that they're aware and they can contact me for whatever has to be done in the future. You can always call me as well and I can get any information. Um, if you look on the website, you can get my phone number. Um.
Okay.
Or talk, talk to people that you know, I'm sure.
Hey, I mean, you can see it's
I'm sure, I'm sure somebody back there has got my number.
Yes, yes.
I, I went to school with all the people in the subdivision, so I mean, um.
You've, you've been here.
All right, so that's my motion.
So we have a motion to condemn and give ninety days, second, uh, the motion's by Mr. Amade, seconded by Mr. Babbin. Vote your machines. Motion passes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Eighty-six sixty-nine Main, Main Street, Homer. Ms. Brown.
The initial complaint was received on February seventh, twenty twenty-four. An inspection conducted on February seventh, twenty twenty-four, indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. A notice was issued, an inspection conducted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Ma'am, your name and address, please?
Okay, my name is Mary Williams. My address is two oh four Rose Lawn Avenue. Uh, I went to get a permit, but they told me I had to come here. What it is, that little piece that my brother added on, the storm knocked that down. But the house itself is solid and I wanna know if I can get a permit to, uh, remodel. You see the little piece on the side? The storm knocked it down. So I didn't wanna remove it until I get some paperwork, a permit saying it's okay.
Mr. Champagne?
Uh, it looks like there's more damage than just the one side.
Yeah, I wanna get a permit to remodel, but I had to come here first.
Right. So you had applied for a permit, but they tell you to come here?
Yeah, they couldn't do anything until I come here.
And your intent is to restore. How long do you think it's gonna take you to do this? Do you have help or you're gonna have a contractor? You're gonna do the work for yourself, like?
Well, like, uh, I'll help with my son, you know? So could I get like the, uh, the year permit?
No, no. So what we're gonna do, we can go ahead and condemn, give you ninety days and then, uh, you apply for a permit and like we've been telling everybody, if you do some, uh, uh, if you get any work done towards it, then you contact us and we'll go out, they'll go out and look again to see where you're at in the progress. If you've had significant progress, then we could continue it. If not, then it's gonna come down.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Champagne to condemn and give ninety days and a second by Mr. Babbin. Vote your machines, please.
So do I have to come back here in ninety days or just go to the permit?
Hold on one sec. Uh, motion has passed. Okay.
So that's two different things. You go get the permit now.
Right.
And then, uh, get, get some, get some work done on it and then we'll, we'll talk in ninety days if you get some work done, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is two oh four Judas, Judith Street in Chauvin. Ms. Brown?
The initial complaint was received on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. An inspection conducted on October nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this residential accessory structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, your name and address, please?
Rebecca Trahan, six twenty-nine Clinton Street. I'm representing my grandfather, Drell Lyons.
Okay, and you too?
That was told that we didn't have to tear that part down when we tore all the other stuff down, cause that was actually holding my uncle's stuff, which the camper that's in the, the yard as well is for him. He is in prison. And, I mean, they did the damage to most of that when they arrested him. And like I say, I mean, if that's what y'all need me to tear down, yes, I'll get that done. I just thought we had to come here because it was said that it was the structures. I didn't know what structures y'all was talking about that was on the property. Because like I said, the camper is on the property, but it's on cement. Nobody lives in it. And yes, it's not livable. They do have broken windows, but he has to have something to come out of jail to fix to live in. If not, he will be homeless.
Okay, but they're talking about this structure right here and
But if that, with that structure, yes, I could get somebody to remove that. Do I have to have a permit to tear that little piece down? Which I had permits already to tear down the big, the big area.
Chris, what was that?
Yes.
Yes. They're free. Go ahead.
Yeah, the permits are, are free, but, um, what I'm gonna do is make a motion to, um, concur with administration.
Okay.
So we have a motion by Mr. Pledger and a second by Mr. Amade to concur with administration. Uh, vote your machines. Just go get a dem- a demolition permit, okay? Thank you. Motion passes. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, just for clarification too, I mean, the main rea- one of the main reasons for a demolition permit, even on something as small as that, is just that way we know it's been done. We know it's closed out and we can follow up and get everything nice and tidy and
Okay, thank you. Okay, next. Sixty-eight oh six Shrimpers Row in Dulack. Ms. Brown?
The initial complaint was received on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. An inspection conducted on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure is condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Your name and address, sir?
My name's, uh, Jack Berg and my address is, uh, sixty-four eighty-four Shrimpers Row.
And your intent?
Intent to repair and restore.
Okay, Mr. Babbin?
Yeah, h- how long has this been on, uh, since the storm?
Since twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, twenty twenty-three, yeah.
All right. I, I mean, you, you plan on restoring this?
Yes.
All right, you, you have the, and again, I'm not trying to get into your finances, but you have a plan in terms of the finances to do this, because Because I, I don't wanna, if we, if we condemn it and give you time to do it. You have to show improvement, otherwise, it's gonna come down, it's gonna cost you, I don't want you to start. And spend money and not do it, then it's gonna cost you twice.
Yeah, right.
You know, I mean, do you think you can make substantial improvement on this within ninety days?
Uh, I'm pretty sure I can.
Oh, I mean, and again, I'm not trying to get into your financial, from a financial and a construction standpoint, okay? Then I'll, 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 cause I, I hate tearing down homes, okay? Some particular cases, we have to.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to condemn this, but give you ninety days, okay? You gotta go get permits immediately, and then you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to show tremendous improvement on it.
Right, right.
You know, we'll go from there, listen, that the area was hit very hard, and we don't wanna, we don't lose, we don't wanna lose any more residents, okay? And and terrible on parish, so again, the ball's gonna be in your court now, for the next ninety days.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mister Babin to condemn and give ninety days, a second by Mister Shampine, vote your machines. Motion passes, alright, go get your permit.
Thank you, alright, we'll do it, y'all gotta see the difference.
Next one, five twenty three Angeron Street in Homer, Miss Brown?
The initial complaint was received on June twenty first, twenty twenty four. Um, an inspection conducted on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, indicated the structure that was there. Was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition, notices was issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty first, twenty twenty five, indicated that the structure has been demolished. But the demolition debris remains, it is our recommendation, um, that this property, um, is condemned. And that, uh, the owner is hereby ordered to, uh, remove the debris by May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mister Shampine to concur with administration, a second by Mister Pledger, vote your machines. Motion passes, next, fifty five ten Stella Street in Chauvin, Miss Brown?
The initial complaint was received on May twenty third, twenty twenty four, an inspection conducted on May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Indicated that this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition, notices was issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty second, twenty twenty five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five.
Your name and address, please?
Jennifer Gary, um, fifty, uh, well, I'm, I'm at fifty five, fifty five hundred. Stella, and the house is fifty five ten, I'm back and forth.
Okay, and your intent with the house?
To, to fix it, like this was reported Danielle, the, I had renters living in it, which hadn't paid rent for like a year, I was incarcerated. I come out, they didn't wanna get out, I had to take them to court, they didn't show up to court to get evicted. And then I got the letter like, not even a month after they moved out, so that, that's their mess, I cleaned up. I mean, I'm trying, it it doesn't, it doesn't look like that much no more, not, not like that.
The dates on the picture?
April twenty second, twenty twenty five. Oh, the grass wasn't cut then, but it, it looks a lot different now, cleaner. I didn't have the funds for repairs, I have stuff that was donated to me, so.
Okay.
Now that I got some, like, a store, I can get the permit and start working on it.
Okay, so did you apply for a permit before, like, okay, and how much time do you think it's gonna, that it would take you?
To complete it? I don't know about complete it, but to start, I mean, I can, I can go tomorrow and apply for a permit. Cause I have enough, I have enough supplies to start.
Okay, so do you think you can do something substantial within ninety days?
There'll be a big difference, yeah, yes.
I like to make, like to make a motion to condemn, but give ninety days.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mister Pledger.
I mean, they, it's not gonna be condemned though, right?
Hold on. If you don't do anything.
Okay, but if this.
Hold on one second, a motion by Mister Pledger to condemn and give ninety days, seconded by Mister Wazan, vote your machines. Okay, so the motion has passed, so if you do substantial amount of work in it, then. Chris, how would I, um?
Okay, so the motion was to condemn it.
Right.
So.
Give ninety days to.
To give them ninety days to make the repairs, so if in ninety days' time. The repairs are made, and we go out and do a follow-up inspection, and it's confirmed, then what you would do is put. Um, item on the agenda, and you could put it on any committee agenda, to rescind the common, a condemnation for this property.
Okay. Extended.
Or extended, right.
So yeah, if you do substantial work, it can either be, it would be either rescinded, or it could be extended to give you more time. Yeah, just keep in contact with me.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, Cam.
Okay, thanks. Alright. Next one, fifty ten, Bayou Side Drive in Chauvin, Miss Brown?
The initial complaint.
He's good. Alright, go ahead, Miss Brown.
The initial complaint was received on March fifth, twenty twenty four, an inspection conducted on March sixth, twenty twenty four. Indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition, a notice was issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty first, twenty twenty five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five.
Your name and address?
Uh, David Verda, fifty one twenty one Bayou Side Drive.
Okay, and your intent?
Uh, demolish it, I just need a little bit more time than that, uh, I never had no, I was, when I first bought the pro- I just bought the property after I had the people who had it. Moved to Texas and never came back, so I bought it, they had two houses, I tore the first one down and, uh, I just ain't had the time to tear the second one down, but, um. I had a car, also I had a car there, and you see the cement driveway, it was parked there, and, um, the parish came and took it, and, um. I was just wondering, like, people next door have been reporting me, but they got a whole lot, if if you, if y'all would've took some better pictures, y'all could've seen the next door. They got like a way more festive place right next door with cars all over, broken up windows, a nasty place. And, uh, I just, I mean, I, I, I'm gonna tear the place down.
Okay, it's okay, it's probably coming to one of these meetings soon, don't you worry.
And then I'm like, man, they got like a whole lot over there.
Don't you worry, I guarantee you, it's coming to a meeting soon. So how much time do you think you need to, to tear it down?
Uh, my buddy says supposed to have the excavator there by the end of the week.
So if I give you ninety days?
Yeah, it's gonna be gone.
Oh, okay, condemn and give ninety days.
Like, make, make a motion that we, um, condemn and give ninety days.
So we have a motion on the floor by Mister Pledger to condemn and give ninety days, a second by Mister Wazan, uh, vote your machines, please?
The trees, I ain't gonna tear down trees though, that's all fruit trees, and that's pretty fast.
Motion pass, listen, I'm not worried about the fruit trees, you go ahead and you grow as many fruit trees as you want, just tear down the structure.
Oh, yeah, I would have to come back.
Alright, thank y'all, appreciate it. Okay, alright, next one. Uh, two sixteen Preskill I'll Drive in Homer, Miss Brown?
Um, the initial complaint was received on April third, twenty twenty four, an inspection conducted on April third, twenty twenty four. Indicated the structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition, notices was issued. An inspection conducted on April twenty first, twenty twenty five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that the residential and accessory structure, um, are condemned. And the owner, um, is ordered to remove or demolish the structure by May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five.
Your name and address, sir?
Brandon Wright, six eight five five Gale Street. Um, my stepson's coming home from the army in December or January, and he was gonna take a loan out to buy through the army. Um, if I need to do any repairs before then, I would be more than willing.
Mister Pledger?
Okay, on, uh. The, the representative that represents that area, Mister Steve Troscler, he's not there, and, um, per his direction. Um, I'd like to continue this until the next, uh, next condemnation, uh, meeting.
So we have a motion to continue to the next condemnation meeting by Mister Pledger. Second by Mister Hamner, vote your machines. And motion passes, next. I'm sorry.
So basically, what that means is, um, we can, you guys can contact Mister Steve Troscler, who's the. Um, the councilperson for that district, and then he'll take it from there with you guys. Alright, do y'all have something I can? Yes, yes, we'll give you, uh, we'll give you his contact information.
Okay. Next one, fifty four twelve fifteen Highway fifty five in Berg, Miss Brown?
The initial complaint was received on June twenty seven, twenty twenty three. An inspection conducted on June twenty ninth, twenty twenty three, indicated this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notice was issued, an inspection conducted on April twenty second, twenty twenty five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this commercial structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, anyone for this property, no, Mister Pledger?
Um, motion to concur with administration.
So we have a motion to concur with administration from Mister Pledger, second by Mister Wazan, vote your machines. And motion passes, next, one twenty one Cypress Grove Street in Montague, Miss Brown?
The initial complaint was received on September seventh, twenty twenty two. An inspection conducted on September twentieth, twenty twenty two, indicated that this structure was in a dangerous and dilapidated condition. Notices was issued, an inspection conducted on April twenty first, twenty twenty five, indicated this structure continues to be in violation. It is our recommendation that this structure be condemned and the owner ordered to demolish or remove the structure by May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five.
Sir, your name and address, please?
Michael Kent, one one three Dolphin Street, Montague, Louisiana.
Okay, your intent?
To restore it, I'm a contractor, I've been in North, North Carolina, and FEMA, FEMA sent me to North Carolina, that's where I've been for eleven, eleven months. I had a permit, I believe it's probably expired at this point, I flew back from North Carolina just to take care of this. This is what I do for a living, guys, I know it's a mess, and my intent's to fix it, I've already bought the materials. It's actually sitting in another property in my shop, to put all that back together. And I've already started, I had already started on it, and I just had to stop, when they call, I have to go, so.
Okay, understand totally, sir, and appreciate you, um, you coming out to, um, do, to share with us. Um, however, like with the, um, with the previous, uh, property owners. On behalf of Mister Steve Troscler, we are going to continue this until the next condemnation hearing, you can give him a call. Talk to him and he'll be able to square.
I believe I spoke with him today, I did a bunch of homework and just, and I spoke to, Miss Brown today, I was trying to get it all together. So that I'd have my ducks in a row.
Save the best for last.
Yes, exactly.
Mister Pulaski?
Yeah, I just wanted to let, uh, uh, gentlemen know, your permit has not expired, it doesn't expire until July twenty sixth. So feel free to keep working.
So there's a motion by Mister Pledger to continue to the next condemnation meeting, second by Miss. Second by Mister Wazan, uh, vote your machines. Motion passes, Mister Pledger?
I just wanted to, uh, verify you do have Mister Troscler's, uh, contact information.
I don't, I called the, I called somewhere, they forwarded it to his phone, if I can get that, so I can go directly, that would be great.
Gotcha.
Now, I own several properties, I buy, everywhere I'm shipped to, I literally do this, this is what I do, you know, this is how I spend my money. So, uh, this is, you know what I'm saying, I do this everywhere I go. A bunch of other properties, I'm sure you.
Motion to adjourn by, by, uh, Mister Amadee, second by Mister Pledger, vote your, vote your machines. Alright, thanks. Um, y'all gotta vote?